Meeting will please come to order. This is a regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Village of Womet. We are being visited tonight by, I thought I saw two, is that Scout Troop Two? So I would invite all the Scouts to come up. This is where we say the Pledge of Allegiance and you guys can help us lead the Pledge of Allegiance tonight. So come on up by the dais. And everyone else, please, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Come on up, guys, don't be shy. Stand right in front of me. Plenty of room. Alright, so the flag's over there on our right. Alright, and so you're gonna start, you're gonna say aye, and then I'll follow you guys, okay? Aye. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, hang on, guys, looks like they wanna take some pictures here. More pictures? Good? Okay. Thanks. You can go to YouTube, we're actually live, I believe, now on YouTube, so you can look at YouTube when you get home and see yourselves leading us in the pledge. Good evening and thank you for joining us tonight. As I said, this is a regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Village of Womet. Tonight is an unusual evening in that there will be two Village Board meetings tonight. This meeting is the final meeting with the Board of Trustees currently seated here at the dais. The agenda for this meeting is limited to approval of the minutes of our prior meeting, a brief report from our Corporation Council, then announcing the results of the April 2nd election, acknowledging our two retiring trustees, and then administering the oath of office to the newly elected trustees. After this meeting concludes, we'll recess and then we'll seat our new Board of Trustees and we'll conduct the new Board's first meeting with the normal agenda of business in front of the Board. So for both meetings, we'll call the matters in which they appear on the printed agendas, and there are agenda on the table by the door, so you may wanna have one if you'd like to follow along. Now, I'm gonna defer, normally at this point, I offer my instructions to speakers, and I will defer that until the beginning of the second meeting. I will, however, remind everyone that we are community neighbors, and as such, we want our meetings to be as civil and courteous as possible. So as a courtesy to those around you, please take this time to turn off your cellphones and your other devices. And while we're turning off our phones, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Wolf?
Here.
Trustee Sullivan?
Here.
Trustee Plunkett?
Here.
Trustee Dodd?
Here.
Trustee Kersman?
Here.
Trustee Pierce?
Here.
President Blinsky?
Here. We're all here, we obviously have a quorum. Next item on the agenda is public comment, and during public comment, we ask if there's any member of the audience who would like to address the Board on an item which is not on the agenda. As I mentioned earlier, there will be two Board meetings tonight, with the second one taking up a normal agenda, so if there are members of the audience who would like to address the Board tonight, I would ask that you wait until the second meeting, and then you'll actually be addressing the current Board of the Village as opposed to what is now, or soon to be, the old Board of the Village. But all that said, if there's any member of the audience who would like to speak now and address the Board on an item which is not on the agenda, please raise your hand. Okay, moving on to item three. Item three is the consent agenda. For this meeting, there's just one item on the consent agenda, which is approval of the minutes of the regular Board meeting held on April 23rd, 2019. So is there any member of the audience who would like to remove that item from the consent agenda? And any of the trustees would like to move that single item from the consent agenda? Okay. May I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Still moved.
Is there a second? Okay, it's been moved in second, but Madam Clerk, please call the roll on the motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Trustee Wolf?
Aye.
Trustee Sullivan?
Aye.
Trustee Plunkett?
Aye.
Trustee Dodd?
Aye.
Trustee Kersman?
Aye.
Trustee Pierce?
Aye.
President Blinsky?
Aye. So the motion carries, the consent agenda has been adopted. Next item on the agenda is item four, Report of Officers, and item 4.1 is Report from Corporation Council Regarding the Open Meetings Act. I will turn it over to Mr. Stein, our Corporation Counsel.
Thank you, Mayor. There is a matter that, I guess, is pertinent to this Board. There was a Open Meetings Act complaint filed with the Attorney General by a member of the public for the actions that occurred here at the April 9th meeting. That meeting, essentially, there was an adjournment, and then immediately after, I would say within less than probably a minute, the meeting was unadjourned. The Attorney General issued an opinion without asking my office for anything, which is unusual, but unusually good in this circumstance, as the Attorney General deemed that complaint unfounded and ruled that the Village had done nothing wrong. It was important, it's important for us to know and for us to communicate to the public that we do follow the Open Meetings Act, we take it seriously, and sometimes things like that happen, but it was a matter to allow two other people to speak. The Attorney General went out of its way to make that a point, and we have consistently upheld that standard, and will hopefully do so and continue to do so in the future. There is a full written report in the agenda and along with the opinion that if anybody would care to read it, it's there.
Any questions for Mr. Stein? Okay, moving on, item five, the Standing Committee reports. There are no reports from any of our Standing Committees this evening, so we'll move on to item six, which is business pertaining to the April 2nd, 2019 Consolidated Election. First item is item 6.1, Announcement of Official Certificate of Results of the April 2, 2019 Consolidated General Election. I will turn that over to Mr. Frenzer, Village Manager, and also our Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Excuse me. The Cook County Clerk, having completed a canvas of all votes for the Office of Trustee of the Village of Womet of the April 2nd, 2019 Consolidated General Election, hereby certifies the following vote totals. First, for the Office of Village Trustee for a four-year term, the results will be read in the order candidates appeared on the ballot. Joel I. Feinstein, 1,542. Daniel E. Sullivan, Jr., 2,134. Senta Plunkett, 2,447. Ri Re Pelletan, 1,696. And Gina Kennedy, 1,835. Therefore elected were Daniel E. Sullivan, Jr., Senta Plunkett, and Gina Kennedy. For the Office of Village Trustee, to fill the vacancy of Stephen Leonard, two-year term, the results as certified by the County Clerk were Candidates Peter H. Barrow, 2,174. Jeff Axelrod, 1,369. Mr. Barrow was elected.
Thank you, Mr. Frenzer. Next item is acknowledgement of the retirement of Trustee Julie Wolf. As our standard, we will all have an opportunity to say a few words, and since I'm the Chair, I choose that I get to go first.[466.47][466.47](Laughter). So Trustee Wolf's service to the community began several years before she was elected a Village Trustee. She served on the Streetscape Committee from 1996 to 2001, the Public Art Committee from 2002 to 2003, the Appearance Review Commission, which is one of our major land use commissions from 2004 to 2009. She was also involved in the Sheridan Road Beautification Effort, 2008, 2009, and she served on the Village Board from 2011 till tonight. In addition, she also currently serves on the Board of Directors of Housing Our Own Womet, which provides financial housing support to seniors and disabled residents in Womet. By my math, that's roughly 19 years of service, and as I will mention in a minute, she's not done yet. So Julie, you and I began our service on the Village Board together in 2011, when we were both elected Village Trustee, and I think everyone knows that Village Board members are unpaid volunteers, but I think we all find the role to be very rewarding when we reflect upon the accomplishments of Village Government. And, you know, the staff, Mr. Frenzer, Mr. Bremen and their team, you know, they run the Village day-to-day, the Board doesn't, and we are very grateful for their dedication and their diligence. But at the Board, we do have an important role in that we set the tone, we determine the priorities, we set the funding levels, and we provide leadership and oversight towards the bigger picture goals of the Village. So during your tenure on the Board, you know, what has the Village and the Board accomplished? Here are just some of the highlights, because it's actually been a busy eight years. You know, in the area of economic development, revitalized downtown, restaurants, shops, entertainment, the redevelopment of the old Ford Car Dealer site across the street at 611 Green Bay Road, development of the Marriott Residence Inn Hotel near the Edens Expressway, and I feel remiss if I didn't mention the Wometonomics marketing campaign. So in the area of municipal infrastructure, and you were on the Municipal Services Committee for much of your time on the Board, if not all, I think all, yeah. Highlights, the West Park Sanitary Sewer Project, you know, an award-winning project that we know has already prevented, or at least minimized, basement backups for homes west of Ramona Road, given the amount of water that has gone into the tank there. We've increased spending on roads and sidewalks and alleys, and then just this year, we approved a major stormwater improvement project, the so-called Neighborhood Storage Project, which again will serve homes in the separate sewer system west of Ridge Road. Environmental initiatives, another area near and dear to your heart, the restoration of the Elmwood Dunes Preserve, the ban on coltar sealants, and again, recently, the endorsement of the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus Greenest Region Compact. In the area of finance, we've maintained our AAA rating, we've expanded our customer base for the water plant, and as you know, the staff is always focused on efficiency and cost-saving alike, and, you know, we've got examples like the renegotiation of the refuse contract, which is actually big money for savings for the Village. Couple more, three more, actually. In the area of administration, I don't know if we even remember electrical aggregation, but that saved residents $4.6 million from 2012 to 2016. There were a number of technology enhancements that improved customer service, and then we were one of only nine municipalities to get a perfect 100% score on a Sunshine Award for transparency. So, you know, that's quite a bit of stuff, and you were part of it, and it's, you know, it's, there's sort of a certain special thing for me, because you and I have served the whole time, and I still remember some of the coffees that we attended together as a candidate and the like. So anyways, as I alluded to earlier, Trustee Wolf will be continuing her service to our community. On tonight's second agenda tonight is a recommendation for her appointment to the Environmental and Energy Commission. What's not mentioned on that agenda is the fact that subsequent to her appointment, she will be appointed to the role of Chair of the Commission at our next Village Board meeting on May 28th. So once again, Julie stepping up to serve the community. So Julie, thank you for your friendship, and thank you for your service, and thank you for your continued service to our community.[753.82][753.82](Applause). I open the floor to members of the Board who'd like to say a few words.
Well, you captured it very well, and I would just echo all of that, and really appreciate, and you will be missed, as I said earlier, I'm gonna miss my friend to the right, but, you know, learned a lot and really brought a good demeanor and thought process to the Board, and I've always enjoyed working with you. So it'll be exciting to see what you continue to do, but I hope you enjoy your vacation for the next couple of weeks. Congratulations.
I'm next, okay. I'll try not to get too sad. I'm really gonna miss you, Julie. You've been phenomenal on the Board, you've been such a valued trustee and a friend, and I just appreciate your guidance. Whenever you'd say something, it just made sense. You didn't have to speak on and on, you didn't have to talk too much, but when you said something, it just, it was final and it made sense, and we all respect that. And I really appreciate everything you've done to make Womet a greener community, and I'm so excited that you will be the Chair of the EEC, and we, I promise to carry on your green initiatives, and I know the Board is so excited to have that, to have that as your legacy. So, thank you.
We're sort of going around the horn, so, Trustee Dodd. And by the way, I think Trustee Plunkett might have been referring to me as the person who talks too much, so.[858.01][858.01](Laughter).
I mostly first wanted to say thank you, Julie. As a newer trustee, you were somebody that I relied on significantly. You just have so much experience, so much knowledge in so many different areas. I didn't realize, actually, you had been serving for this community for 19 years, so that's remarkable. So my two or three years seems like nothing. And then I just appreciated just your demeanor, your calmness, you know, I can have a tendency to get worked up about something, and I just loved always talking to you and being very positive, always so caring about the residents of this community first and foremost. That was always your goal, and, you know, I just, I learned a lot from you in only two years, and I'm sad to not be able to learn more from you. However, I'm so excited that you're going to be chairing the EEC, because that, whatever comes to us, well, I know you'll have a huge footprint in that, and as somebody who will be chairing the Administration Committee, I can't think of anybody better to do that. But just thanks for teaching me so much and helping me to try to be a better trustee, because I know you did that for me, so thank you.
Trustee Kersman?
I'd like to echo the thanks for your many years of service, and like Trustee Dodd, I didn't know the full extent of it, so it is a spectacular record of service, and I appreciate it. It's clear to me that you have a real passion for environmental issues, and I can tell this because when you have an idea or speak to something, your face lights up, and it says to me that you have a passion for it, and those issues bring you joy, and that's something that I can learn from. And I really do appreciate all that you're going to give back in your continued service, and I look forward to benefiting from that. Like Trustee Plunkett said, you know, I, you know, would like to carry that on, and my door is always open to you. If you have ideas that you'd like to share, I'm all ears to them, because I know you have a deep wealth of knowledge, so thank you so much for your service.
Trustee Pierce?
I congratulate Julie for your service. It's been a pleasure to be a trustee with you for a year. I was very excited when you decided to run eight years ago, and I knew you would be excellent, as you have been, and I too am thrilled about your commitment to environmental issues, because our town has benefited immensely from that, so congratulations.
So I think Mr. Frenzer is gonna hold his comments until we, until after the next item, and he'll refer both to Trustee Pierce and to Trustee Wolf, so. Trustee Wolf, if you would like to say a few words?
Just a few, thank you very much, everyone. It's so nice to hear all these things, and it has been an absolute pleasure working with everyone. You know, I've commented to everyone how well-balanced the Board is, how, as Bob says, we don't always agree, but we find a way to work together, and it really has been a pleasure working with all of you. And it is gratifying to see some of the things that are important to me moving forward, the act of transportation. Elmwood Dunes actually happened early on in my tenure, and the outcome of that is way beyond my greatest expectations at the time. It's amazing, and I don't know if you guys knew this, but I actually designed the garden at the top of it. It was very involved in it, and it's been wonderful. And what else? Well, Senta, when you and I went to the North American Climate Summit, that was totally enlightening, it was absolutely great. So anyway, it's been a pleasure working with all of you, and I'm still around, and I think you'll have, the new Board will be very strong, and you'll be able to continue some of the initiatives that are helping the Village so much.
I have a token of the Village's appreciation for your years of service.[1120.13][1120.13](Applause). Okay, the next item on the agenda is item 6.3, acknowledgement of the retirement of Trustee George Pierce. So Trustee Pierce continued his service to the Village when he accepted appointment to the Village Board in 2018 to fill a vacancy, and Trustee Wolf has a few years of EEC service required to pass the number of years that Trustee Pierce has been involved in the Village, because he was on the Zoning Board of Appeals from 1993 to 1997, the Village Board for his first tour of duty from 1997 to 2005, and then he was on the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners, I think, were you Chair for a while, too, of that? From 2005 to 2014, and then the Village Board again for a year, so I count that as over 20 years of commitment to the Village. In addition, many of you know that Trustee Pierce is an active Rotarian and served as President of the Womet, the Rotary Club of Womet Harbor, right? Got the right one, as well. So, you know, his joining the Board, his experience, it really let him hit the ground running, and while he was only a member for a year, I think he made significant contributions in that year. I feel like, you know, in 2014, I know we had the big recitation of your service back then as well, and we appreciated that service as well. So, you know, George, I personally appreciate that you were willing to step into the spot, you know, and serve one more time for the Village, so thank you very much for that. Others who would like to speak, we don't have to go, we'll go this way first, so Trustee Kersman, if you're prepared.
Yes, yeah. Trustee Pierce, it's been a pleasure to sit next to you and to glean your insight and wisdom. I've tried to learn all that I can from you, because in both style and substance, you are the consummate professional. In style, I'm impressed by your thoughtful, easygoing, and affable way, and, but more than anything else, a quality that I think is essential in a leader, imperative in a leader, is humility, and I believe you demonstrate that whether you intend to or not, and it's a wonderful quality. In substance, your commitment to service is unbelievable. President Blinsky outlined it a little bit, and I'm impressed by anyone who can handle eight years of Board service. I'm aware of all the contributions you've made in the Rotary Club. I've also come to learn over the time together here that you're very involved, like I am, in our faith-based community. I learned the other day, when we were presented with information about meal delivery, that your family's been involved in meal delivery, and again, you know, when we had a need, you stepped up, and so for all of the above, I'm just super impressed, and I really do appreciate the time that we've served together.
Thank you.
Trustee Pierce, I remember you were one of the first people I met when I was considering running for the Board, and I never thought I'd have the wonderful opportunity to sit on the same Board with you. You gave me such great wisdom then, and such great perspective, but I, and I really appreciated that while I was running an election, just your knowledge, but I never thought I'd have the opportunity to actually learn from you. And you joined us at such a, we had so much going on when you joined us, you know, I think it was first minimum wage, then it was stormwater, then it was the budget, and wow, you just stepped in like you had never left, and that just shows your commitment to the community, your commitment to the residents, and just all the knowledge you have. So it was really a blessing to have you here, and I'm, we're gonna really, really miss you and your knowledge, just like we'll miss Trustee Wolf, so thank you.
Thank you.
And I don't know, is, can you have a third time being called up? Because you'll be at the top of my list.
Well, if you wanna move away.[1390.83][1390.83](Laughter).
Who knows?
It's pretty much the only way, it's the only way you'll get out of it, George.
I mean, I was really sad when Trustee Leonard left, but wow, we got a great replacement, so thank you.
Thanks.[1401.66][1401.66](Laughter).
Anybody, who, go ahead, Senta. Trustee Plunkett?
George, I met George on the Board of Police and Fire Commissioners, and that was wonderful. I mean, I was a total newbie in that, and he never treated me like I was new. He treated me like, you know, somebody that should be right there, and I just really appreciated your guidance, and when this opened up and I heard that you could possibly be on the Board, I was thrilled. I can't imagine anybody else stepping into the issues that we had that would be so respectful of all the issues and that the community would respect jumping into these midstream. It has been quite a year, and it was just wonderful to have you here, so thank you for everything, and I look forward to, I'm, there's gonna be more, there has to be more, so we'll see you soon, there's, I'm not worried about that at all.
Thank you, George, and I think everybody's capturing it very well, but especially the fact that you stepped up and filled in, I think you represented Trustee Leonard exceptionally well, and so I think he should be very proud, but as Ben said, you were the right addition, because you helped this Board really get through a lot of tough issues, and how you approached it, and how, I think we all learned, especially, I know I did, of how to approach things in the thoughtfulness, so, and I know, and I think the entire community knows, you're involved a lot more than what President Blinsky read, just on the Village side, but you're a value to the, to Womet, so thanks for your service.
And, let's see, George, I think I first met you when you were a trustee, your first time around, I think maybe talking about public art, something like that, back in the day, which actually worked out wonderfully, but...
Because they didn't pick my...[1523.13][1523.13](Laughter).
Oh, I don't, I don't remember that, I just remember working through the process and public comment, that's, that's what, what I remember, and that worked out fine, but you were so helpful when I was first running for trustee, which I really appreciate. And then when I heard you were coming on the Board, I thought, wow, what a great choice, and here you just hit the deck running in the middle of budget season, you know, never missed a beat, and I think you have the ability to just really cut to the heart of the matter, like, this is what we really need to think about, and it was just so helpful, and I really appreciate having been able to serve with you for a year.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, just as a concluding comment, I mean, your experience allowed you to hit the ground running, but you really dug in, too. There was a lot of work to catch up, if you will, for, given all the things that we had in front of us. So I'll recognize you, and the floor is yours, if you'd like to say a few words.
Thank you. First of all, thank you to President Blinsky and the trustees for allowing me to serve as a trustee again. I think I've said it before, Womet, it's easy to volunteer in Womet, because it's just a great place, and there's lots of volunteers, and it's just very enjoyable, but it's a real privilege to be appointed, you know, you weren't elected, you were appointed, and I enjoyed it, but I'm thankful for the opportunity, because whenever I've been involved in any volunteer position, you learn a lot, and that's, I enjoy that. I specifically wanna thank the staff, who I'm just always impressed by, you know, starting with the Village Manager, Tim Frenzer, Mike Bremen, and the, all the department heads are just really amazing in terms of their dedication and knowledge, and I really enjoy working with them and learning from them. I had no idea what a 15-year rolling amortization was, and now I know, and it's, probably more people or more towns are going to learn about it. Just one observation is, you know, I'm very impressed by the trustees here now, and I think, you know, Womet's, I mean, when you've done this before, it's kinda like you come in at a different perspective, but I think Womet is really in great hands with the staff and the trustees, and the whole budget process was, that's something when you're thrown in, that's difficult, and I was really impressed with how the budget process has gotten so easier, for lack of a better way of saying it, understandable, and kudos to Tim and his team, as well as Melinda, for educating me on the challenge the towns have with pensions and ways to address it, I just found that fascinating. And the idea that there's like 7,000 government districts in Illinois, and we're one of 13 that has a AAA bond rating is just phenomenal. I mean, that's, that's really, so Womet should be very proud of that, and I really enjoyed learning and being a part of it, so thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Pierce, and I also have a token of the Village's appreciation.
Great. Thank you. (Applause).
I believe Mr. Frenzer wanted to say a few words.
Just a few words. On behalf of all the Village staff, Trustee Wolf and Trustee Pierce, we'd like to thank you, and we'd like to take the opportunity to express our gratitude and our thanks to you. We've always been impressed and amazed by your commitment to service in the Village, not just on the Village Board, but in the many, many ways that have been listed. We've always appreciated your commitment, your integrity, your graciousness, your leadership in public meetings, not just these meetings, but all the committee and standing committee meetings and subcommittee meetings over all these...
meetings and subcommittee meetings over all these years that are just far too many to count, but sometimes dealt with very difficult subjects, and required leadership and graciousness with the community, too. Our, all the things we've worked with you on over the years are just far too numerous to count, but also too many to count are the kindnesses that you've extended to all of us, and we very much appreciate it. It's been a privilege working with you, and we'd like to extend to you both our gratitude and our congratulations on tremendous contributions to the community. Thank you both.
Okay, we will move on to item 6.4, which is administration of oath of office to trustee-elect Peter H. Barrow.
Yes, sir.
I'm here with my granddaughter Alexa and my grandson Evan.
Now, the tricky part is, is can you hold both their hands with your left hand so you can get it right?
Yes.
Are you ready? Please repeat after me. I, Peter H. Barrow...
I, Peter H. Barrow...
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America...
The Constitution of the State of Illinois...
The Constitution of the State of Illinois...
The Charter, laws, and ordinances...
The Charter, laws, and ordinances...
Of the village of Wilmet...
Of the village of Wilmet...
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties...
And I will faithfully discharge the duties...
Of my office as village trustee...
Of my office as village trustee...
According to the best of my ability...
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Thank you. Item 6.5 is administration of oath of office to trustee-elect Gina Kennedy.
Okay.
Ready? Yes.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Gina Kennedy, do solemnly swear...
I, Gina Kennedy, do solemnly swear...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America...
The Constitution of the State of Illinois...
The Constitution of the State of Illinois...
The Charter, laws, and ordinances...
The charters, law, and ordinances...
Of the village of Wilmet...
Of the village of Wilmet...
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office...
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office...
Village trustee...
The village trustee...
According to the best of my ability...
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Item 6.6 is administration of oath of office to trustee-elect senta Plunkett.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, senta Plunkett, do solemnly swear...
I, senta Plunkett, do solemnly swear...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America...
The Constitution of the State of Illinois...
The Constitution of the State of Illinois...
The Charter, laws, and ordinances...
The Charter, laws, and ordinances...
Of the village of Wilmet...
Of the village of Wilmet...
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office...
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office...
As village trustee...
As village trustee...
According to the best of my ability...
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Item 6.7 is administration of oath of office to trustee-elect Daniel E. Sullivan, Jr.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Daniel E. Sullivan, Jr., do solemnly swear...
I, Daniel E. Sullivan, Jr., do solemnly swear...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America...
The Constitution of the State of Illinois...
The Constitution of the State of Illinois...
The Charter, laws, and ordinances...
The Charter, laws, and ordinances...
Of the village of Wilmet...
The village of Wilmet...
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office...
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office...
As village trustee...
As village trustee...
According to the best of my ability...
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Next item on the agenda is item 7, adjournment sine da, sine da, sine da is Latin for without a day, so that is without a day set for reconvening, which means that this is the final adjournment for this village board. So, trustee Wolf, may I have a motion to adjourn sine da?
So moved.
And trustee Pierce, would you second the motion?
Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? We stand adjourned, sine da. We'll take a break. Please come to order, this is a regular meeting of the board of trustees of the village of Wilmet. Now, this is our second meeting of the night, and we already said the pledge of allegiance, so I won't, I won't have us say the pledge of allegiance again, but I will say thank you for joining us tonight, and I'll say welcome to our two new trustees, trustee Kennedy and trustee Barrow. We'll call the matters in the order in which they appear on the printed agenda, and there are copies of the agenda on the table by the door, so you may want to have one to see when your matter will be called. If you do plan to address us tonight, we ask that you please come up to the podium, please speak into the microphone and tell us who you are and where you live, as that may be relevant to the matter at hand. We ask that you speak clearly into the microphone so we can hear you, and because everything you say and everything we say is being recorded. From those recordings, minutes of the meeting are prepared, and those minutes are both available online at wilmet.com, as well as at our, at Village Hall in hard copy form. Our village board meetings are also televised on local access channel 6 and on the internet, and if you look up, you can actually see the cameras, the red light indicates the active camera. By televising our meetings, we make it easy for our neighbors in the community to follow the proceedings of village board, to see the types of matters that come before us, the questions that we ask and the policies we create. You can find archived videos of village board and other local government meetings at wilmet.com, and I would like to personally thank all the residents of Wilmet who tune in regularly to channel 6 and pay attention to the workings of their local government. Now, before each meeting, the board receives a packet of agenda materials, and these materials are also posted on wilmet.com on the Friday before our meeting, so residents and other interested parties can review the very same materials that the board members receive. This week's packet contained 291 pages. Now, we've had an opportunity to review all the information in the packet, so if you do plan to address us tonight, we ask that you tell us the most relevant, the most material, the, the points that you really want us to focus on. I've already asked people to turn off their cellphones, but in case anybody turned it back on, please turn it off, and at this point, I would ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Sullivan...
Here.
Trustee Kennedy...
Here.
Trustee Dodd...
Here.
Trustee Kersman...
Here.
Trustee Barrow...
Here.
Trustee Plunkett...
Here.
President Blinsky...
Here. Okay, we do have a quorum, all of us are in attendance. Next item is item 2, public comment. During public comment, we ask if there's any member of the audience who would like to address the board on a matter which is not on the agenda. Members of the audience may address the board on matters which are on tonight's agenda when the matter is called. Is there any member of the audience who would like to address the board on a, on a matter which is not on the agenda? Yes, ma'am, welcome.
My name is Betsy Herudian, I'm actually a resident of Northfield, but I live in the Avoca School District 37. So, I just wanted to report to you today publicly that we had a very successful bike-to-school day today, and I wanted to thank the Wilmet police, especially deputy chief Collins, who served as a crossing guard for us at Lake and Laramie today. We had the Glenview police also involved, officer Detloff helped us run a bike rodeo with our second graders. We had Tommy from the Wilmet Park District run the bike rodeo with our second graders, and we had administration from Loyola help make sure our students got to school safely, and Dairy Queen donated coupons for ice cream, which was also a big hit, and it was so popular, we had over 200 children ride their bikes to school today. So, I just wanted to say thank you to the village of Wilmet for supporting us in this endeavor. We also recently were granted a grant for safe routes to school, and so we're really looking forward to seeing where that takes us and working with the village, so I just wanted to take this opportunity, I wish my scouts were still here to see me make this comment, but they've gone to their meeting, but I just wanted to publicly go on record as thanking the village, and to let you know that we had a great day today, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. Your scouts can watch you on YouTube tomorrow. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, my name is Nancy Hoing, and I'm co-president of the League of Women Voters of Wilmet. My league members and I would like to thank all of the trustees for their tremendous service, and welcome new trustees this evening and the re-elected incumbents. Helping our electorate to be informed is core to the mission of the league, and we were pleased with the attendance at and views of our candidate forums, as well as the distribution and views of our voter guide, and we thank you all this evening for participating in those events. We believe having contested races and informed electorate with our opportunity for residents to vote for the candidate that is most aligned with their own values and goals for the village is an essential part of our democracy. We at the league value good governance, the practice of civil discourse, intergovernmental cooperation, transparent government, and opportunities for continued public input. We continue to hear from our 190 actively engaged local members about issues that are of importance to them. We select annually a program of advocacy that aligns with the positions of our national and state leagues. In addition to good governance, our local advocacy work continues in the areas of gun violence prevention, environmental stewardship, and fair and affordable housing. We welcome the opportunity to work with all of you and others in the community to advance strategies which support these important issues. As the new boards begins its work, we invite you to meet with the league to get to know our membership and our priorities so that we can work all together in the best interest of our village, and thank you again.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on to item 3, which is the consent agenda. As described on the printed agenda, items which are routine business that are not normally debated by the village board are placed on the consent agenda. All items beginning with the number 3 are on the consent agenda, and tonight, that means you've got, starting on page 1, with item 3.1, all the items on page 2, and about two-thirds of the items on page 3, ending with item 3.20. Items on the consent agenda are up for approval tonight, and if an item's not removed by a member of the audience, and is not removed by one of the trustees, the item will be approved and it will not be discussed. So, I'll begin by asking, is there any member of the audience who would like to remove an item from the consent agenda? May I see a show of hands? Okay, moving on, I'll ask if there are any items for any of the trustees who would like to remove from the consent agenda. I do have to say, it's, I'm accustomed to seeing particular faces in particular places, and now that I've shuffled everything up, I got confused there for a minute when I looked at trustee Barrow.
Doesn't look right, I get it.
And any items that any of the trustees would like to, like to remove from the consent agenda? Okay, hearing none, may I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, madam clerk, please call the roll on the motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Trustee Sullivan...
Aye.
Trustee Kennedy...
Aye.
Trustee Dodd...
Aye.
Trustee Kersman...
Aye.
Trustee Barrow...
Aye.
Trustee Plunkett...
Aye.
President Blinsky...
Aye. So, the motion carries, the consent agenda has been adopted, and if you're here for an item on the consent agenda, it was just approved, and I will clarify that people who were here tonight, again, all the items beginning with the 3, and that includes land use items, 33, 34, 35, 37, and 38. So, if that was your item, it was just approved, there'll be no further discussion of those items or any of the other items on the consent agenda, so you're free to leave, of course, more than welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. Now, it's early, I know it's a little later than normal when I get to this point, it's 8:20, still early enough to stop by one of our downtown restaurants before you head home. All right, next item on the agenda is item 4.1, which is proclamation designating May 19 to 25, 2019, as Public Works Week, and I will read that proclamation. Whereas public works, infrastructure, facilities, and services provided in our community are an integral part of our residents' everyday lives, and whereas the health, safety, and well-being of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services, and whereas such facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated work of public works professionals, engineers, and administrators representing state, county, municipal, and local units of government, and whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as water, sewers, streets and street lighting, forestry, public buildings, and snow removal, and whereas the efficiency of qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform, now therefore, I, Robert T. Blinsky, president of the village... Now therefore, I, Robert T. Blinsky, President of the Village of Wilmette, do hereby proclaim the week of May 19 through 25, 2019, as Public Works Week in the Village of Wilmette, and call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contributions which public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life." Next item on the agenda is Item 4.2, Approval of Recommendation of Village Board Committee Assignments. Under the Village Code, the Village President appoints the Chair and members of the Board's six standing committees with the approval of at least three trustees. I have submitted for your approval the following committee appointments and chairs. Land Use, Trustee Barrow is the Chair, Trustee Dodd and Trustee Plunkett the members. Finance, Trustee Kennedy the Chair, Trustee Plunkett and Trustee Sullivan the members. Administration, Trustee Dodd the Chair, Trustee Barrow and Trustee Sullivan as the members. Municipal Services, Trustee Sullivan as Chair, Trustee Kennedy and Trustee Kersman as the members. Public Safety, Trustee Kersman the Chair, Trustee Barrow and Trustee Dodd as the members. And Judiciary, Trustee Plunkett as Chair, Trustee Kennedy and Trustee Kersman as the members. And as such, I will entertain a motion to approve these recommendations for the Village Board Committee Assignments.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? All right, Madam Clerk, please call the roll on the motion.
Trustee Sullivan?
Aye.
Trustee Kennedy?
Aye.
Trustee Dodd?
Aye.
Trustee Kersman?
Aye.
Trustee Barrow?
Aye.
Trustee Plunkett?
Aye.
President Blinsky?
Aye. So the motion carries, the committee assignments have been approved. I just want to make a comment here at this point in time regarding the seating arrangements. So during the time that I've been on the Board, the chairs have been arranged by committee, they've been arranged by seniority, and today, they're arranged a little bit in a random fashion, and I wanted to explain that. Actually, Trustee Kennedy offered the idea of changing the seating up more frequently than just every two years, because I agree with her, that you sort of build a relationship with the person that you sit next to, and as such, why not make that more varied than just maybe one or two people that you sit next to? So that's what I'm going to do. So I plan to rearrange the seating. I haven't decided if it's going to be once, but it's probably going to be four times, like every six months or so, switch around the seats. So it will confuse me as Chair, it will confuse the deputy clerk calling the roll, but I think it'll be good overall for the Village Board. So thank you, Trustee Kennedy, for your very first contribution to the Village Board, I thought it was a great idea, and we'll be implementing that, but I didn't want people to all of a sudden think something weird had happened, and now I'm switching around the seating, it is the plan in advance that I will do that. So, moving on to the rest of our reports from the officers, our report from our Village Manager, Mr. Frenzer.
No report, Mr. President.
Corporation Counsel, Mr. Stein?
No report, Mr.
Yeah, you've used up your one report for the year already at the last meeting. Item 5 is the Report of the Liquor Control Commissioner, and there is no report tonight, so we'll move on to our standing committee reports. First up is the Land Use Committee, Trustee Barrow.
No report.
Next is the Finance Committee, Trustee Kennedy.
No report.
Well, you have a report.
Oh, sorry. Ms. Malloy is going to present the first quarter financial update.
Thank you, Ms. Malloy. Thank you, Trustee Kennedy.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Good evening. We're just going to have to adjust these for a second. So, I'm just waiting, there we go. So again, we're going to talk about the first quarter, and there's been mention made of the budget and the budget process and sort of what's happened, so for the new trustees, in some ways, this is the start of 2020, and the reason why I say that is, even though we're talking about 2019, that's what's, that foundation is what's going to help us understand our discussions that we're going to have in 2020. So, our first slide here, we'll start with talking about the general fund revenue and the expense projections, and how we're going to use some of the reserves that we have in 2019 for street patching and the Wilmette Avenue Phase 1 engineering. In the water and sewer funds, what we're going to be discussing is the declining water consumption and the impact that that's having on our revenue collections. And then, our last slide is going to be about the 2020 budget schedule. So the general fund revenues, I think overall, you're going to walk away and you're going to say, things look pretty good for us right now. Total revenues are outperforming the budget projections by about $190,000, and really, even though you're going to see arrows that are going both up and down, what we see is a decline in sales tax and a decline in the real estate transfer, those two are offset by the increase that we're experiencing right now with income tax collections. So really, we're left with what's happening with permits, and that's really what's causing the $190,000 that we're experiencing over our total projections, but I want to get a little bit more into some of these particular items, so sales tax. This is one where, if you look up at the side here, I know there's a lot of colors, so bear with me. The green is telling you the actual, so that's what's happening month by month. Our black line here is actually a 12-month rolling actual, so it smoothes the actual that's occurring. That's what you really want to focus on. The yellow line, then, is what our budget estimate is, and then, over here in the red circle, this is what's telling us the first quarter's activity. This picture helps you understand what has been happening with sales tax collections. I don't think that we should be surprised by the fact that there has been a decline, and why has that happened? Because we've had some major closures, think of what's happened with Carson's. But what concerns me, and we know from the yellow line, we took that into consideration when we were building the 2019 budget, but if we look at this first quarter activity in comparison to the first quarter of last year, we can see that things really are down. I do have a couple more months now that I've been able to take a look at in terms of information from the state, and I'm going to tell you, we're going to see that black line continuing to drop a little further in the next couple months as well.
And just a point of clarification, in particular for the new trustees, but for others as well, there's a couple a month lag here, right?
Yes.
So you see the peak in March, but that's really December's sales receipts.
Exactly.
Okay. And so, we should be looking at this little peak here on the far right at around just under $250,000, and that compares to
Yes.
$310,000
Yes.
Last year.
Correct. So again, our budget estimate assumed we were going to have a decline in this revenue source, but I am concerned about what it's going to be going forward. So, is this a red flag, only in, I would call it a yellow, because it's telling us what the trend is right now. We're not below our budget estimate, even though the projection now has been adjusted down, because we're being sensitive to it. This is a revenue source we're going to continue to track, and it's just one to be wary of as we go forward. Local use tax, the reason why I put this one up here is it is actually part of the sales tax collections, but local use tax, and especially what has happened in this first quarter here, in terms of what we see in that red circle, has been an increase, and the reason is, you might have heard it referred to sometimes as the Amazon tax, but it's also called the Wayfair, there was a court case that was passed. The bottom line to understand about this is, this is really related to internet sales that are occurring, and it's a revenue source that is continuing to grow. You can see that, again, our budget estimate, we assume that there was going to be an increase. To President Blinsky's point, what you see occurring here because of the delay in collections is that that's really Christmas sales that occurred. Now, the actuals for the next couple months, it's going to come down because we had expected to, but this is a revenue source that we're going to continue to watch, because I expect it to outperform as the year goes on.
Again, a comment for the new trustees and for others, though, the use tax differs from the sales tax in that the sales tax is based on purchases inside of Wilmette, whereas the use tax, at least under current law, and there's talk about changing this, the use tax is allocated on a per capita basis.
You're correct.
So, you, you know, we lose out, if you assume that the average Wilmette resident spends more online than the average Illinois resident, we don't get quite as much versus if they were shopping in a store. It's not a one-for-one trade-off here.
And another point that I'll just say is, what we see here, and to the point that President Blinsky was making, in the monthly reports that you get, there's a much more extensive discussion of all of the different revenue sources in some more detail, and it explains this point that you're talking about right now, the difference between the local use tax and how it's distributed versus what we call the regular sales tax versus the home rule sales tax as well. So there is more information in that packet. So our next slide is about income tax, and it's distributed similar to the local use tax, so again, it's based on our population. And here's one that I'd like you to think about a little bit differently. To me, what really is the interesting point, even though the circle is telling us what's happening in the first quarter, and looking at that compared to what you see in the first quarter of 2018, it's rarely, it's somewhat consistent. In 2018, what happened, two things. One, we expected that the state was going to hold back, which they did, more income tax in terms of the distribution, they changed the percentage that they were allocating out. The other thing they did is they put an administrative fee on top of this. What occurred, though, is that the economy grew stronger, our employment was better, so both the corporate income tax outperformed, as well as the personal income tax. So, overall, income tax in terms of a revenue source for the village way outperformed our budget projection. I don't expect that to be the case in 2019, although it is performing better, and I've adjusted the year-end estimated actual up $30,000, you're not going to see the same growth in this revenue source that you did in prior years. And again, there's a really good write-up about this in the monthly report, if you have time to take a look at that. Permits. Permits has been the story for us over the past several years in terms of where we have seen tremendous growth in terms of a revenue source. And again, if you look over time here, 2018 through where we're at now, you're going to see the black line, we have definitely been overperforming what our budget estimate is. However, in this first quarter, and what I think we're going to see going forward, is this is going to be a revenue source that is getting tempered. So within this number, it doesn't have what we call the non-recurring permits, that's a separate number, this is kind of our standard. I think this is now going to be a revenue source that we're going to expect is going to perform a little bit more towards budget expectations going forward.
And the non-recurring, what's the cutoff where we consider something non-recurring, like $250,000 or $200,000 or something like that?
So, in this case, it is roughly that threshold that you're talking about, I've actually adjusted over time because there has been some growth that has occurred.
Okay.
So, to, yes.
This is for, this number is trying to sort of give a more normal point of view, when you have big projects like the apartment building across the street, or a mansion on the lake, you're not going to get three of those a year, every year, so it's just good budgeting practice to hold that back, and, you know, some of our neighboring communities that have big institutional occupants, if you will, have gotten into trouble, assuming that big universities and big facilities will continue to do that, and so this is really smart budgeting on the staff's part. This is the sort of flow, normal permit, and then we look at the special revenue, if you will, separately, so that we don't spend that money assuming we're going to have it forever.
Correct. So, in the case of what's happening with non-recurring, so that is not a part of this chart, and again, it speaks to sort of what this cutoff threshold and why I couldn't say, yes, that's exactly the number.
Yeah.
There's a couple of things that go into it. So one of the things that I can tell you is, and we have received some more non-recurring since the first quarter, so in April and May, this activity is continuing to happen, there are five homes that are involved in it. These are large homes, think, on the lakefront, and actually, most of them have to do with extensions that occur, so that's not going to be part of a normal baseline that we want to build budget projections on, so those are pulled out. We have three businesses that are doing some unusual things that are, again, permits that we wouldn't normally expect, we've pulled those out, and then we have permits related to work at Eden's Plaza. Again, that shouldn't be something that's part of our baseline as we build budget projections.
So do we have, do we have any thing that shows, because we don't have non-recurring permit fees in here, do we have some projection of what we think that might be, you know, through the end of the year, based on projects that are, you know, in the hopper or things that are started, and do we, you know, because we have a budget for, we have a budget for non-recurring permits, I'm wondering, do we have a slide that kind of shows where they are to date, and then where we expect them to be at the end of the year?
So, we actually don't have a budget number for the non-recurring permits, we do for the non-recurring real estate transactions, we have a number for that, and I don't have a projection for what's going to occur with non-recurring permits, because when extensions are going to happen and such, that's not something I can predict, but the revenue itself is in the first slide that we looked at for the general revenue fund. So that is why I'm saying right now, we're going to be 100, at least at the end of the first quarter, we are $190,000 over our total budget projection for the general fund. When I come out with the next quarterly report, I'll be incorporating now, again, what we have actually received.
So what you're saying is that the $2,328 versus the $2,138, that's non-recurring?
That's the non, that is, it truly is driven by non, because you can see in the slide, it's definitely not our regular permit activity that would drive that number, it is the non-recurring that is driving that. And then, in our next slide, we have real estate transfer tax, and this is a revenue source that I have some concerns about. So in the monthly report, I was able to tell you both the number of transaction, as well as the average selling price, those have both declined. There's some additional commentary that lets you know, it's not unique to Wilmette, this is something that our neighbors are experiencing as well. So this is a revenue source we will keep our eye on to think about how we want to project this going forward.
Are we hearing that from the realtor community, that things are just slowing down?
So there is a blurb in there that kind of gives you, again, some more numbers, and yes, what we're experiencing here in Wilmette is not unique to us, we are having a similar experience as our neighbors.
And we're seeing a reduction in price, I mean, I think the markets return, they're not, we're not at the high, as homes aren't selling what they could have sold for two years ago.
And here's another thing I probably should add into that, and it is part of the commentary, is that what happened in the first quarter of last year is, we had some unusually large, high-valued sales that would have skewed what happened in the first quarter of last year, and they're making a point that really, it is bringing us to a more normalized level, especially when they're looking 2016, 17, 18, and 19. So really, what they feel right now is, it is not that prices have truly dropped, they actually feel that they're more normalized because some of the other higher sales were in their base, and it's coming out.
There's also, there's also been some discussion that there's reduction activity, not just in transactions, but perhaps in large additions to homes, as people are waiting to see the impact on the real estate property tax caused both by the reassessment here, but also by the realignment, the assessor's office of pushing some value away from commercial properties and onto residential. Nobody's quite sure where the tax bills are going to turn out, and that's
Isn't it the other way, pushing
Excuse me, you're right, pushing the residential out of the commercial.
Yeah.
But with the reassessment, there's still concern that nobody really has a good handle what their tax bill is going to be, and that's causing some hesitancy, both on transactions and on remodeling, and things that somebody would use a home equity line for.
So what you're saying is that people are potentially delaying, maybe moving up in the housing stock?
Yes.
Because they want to know what their tax bill would be, and there's uncertainty there.
Right.
Interesting. Interesting lesson for all of us in government, uncertainty breeds paralysis, right?
Yes.
Good thing there's not much uncertainty anywhere in our government today in the United States, right?
And I'm going to step back for a second, so that was, that was a kind of a rougher slide, and maybe the tone of what was happening right now kind of got a little bit down in terms of what's going on. I think we need to step back again and say, remember that first slide? Actually, overall, our revenues are, they're healthy, and we're not just meeting budget expectations right now, we are above that. I was just wanting to give you some sense and some flavor and things to think about when we build that 2020 budget, that there's some revenue sources that have performed really well for us in the past, that maybe we just need to rethink them a little bit in the future going forward.
Yeah, and even some of those you actually did budget lower for 2019 than 2018, and we're still bumping up against it, so
Yes.
I mean, we've run, we've had a nice run of revenues exceeding our expectations, but what you're sort of implying is potentially, we're going to be much tighter to budget this year.
Yes. Again, unless things change, but right now, that's what it's looking like. Again, unless things change, but right now, that's what it's looking like, correct. So we'll turn then to our expenses. Now, in this slide, I think one of the first things you're going to see is there's a lot more arrows, and both going up and down. I'm not going to spend a lot of time going through what's happening individually in each one of these. There's, again, discussion about this in the monthly reports, unless somebody has a particular question. But I think overall here, what I would like you to walk away with is the understanding that we're actually over budget by about 65,000. And in the next slide, it's giving you a sense as to why that's occurring. So, street patching is one of the items, and I think Mike is going to step in here in a moment, and he's going to talk a little bit more about some of these. But just to give you a quick sense, there is a, and I'm going to let you talk about what the acronym is for, but it has to do with our insurance assessment. There might be a special assessment that we have now put into our budget projections. Over time, we're looking at that being about 100,000 over, and that's due to police and fire injuries. Commodities, salt is actually up 50,000 from what our original budget estimate was. And then, as I told you in the opening, we're planning on spending 45,000 of reserves to start the Wilmot Avenue Phase 1 engineering. But again, I think Mike wants to step in here and
Sure.
Add some more commentary.
This is different than past years, at least since I've been back in 2013. We've had six-figure budget savings every year by the end of the year. And usually, that's due to salary and wage, I'm sorry, salary and benefit savings, as we have turnover primarily in our police and fire departments. We're not having that turnover this year. That's not a surprise. We didn't anticipate it. But for reference, last year in 2018, we had seven police officers and firefighters retire. We have one that we anticipate this year, and that's in the fire department. And that's why you don't see that significant wage savings that helps prop up our surplus at the end of the year. Melinda mentioned overtime. We have injuries in police and fire. Some are work-related, some are non-work-related, and in fire especially, we staff at our bare minimum. So anybody, anytime somebody goes out on an injury, that automatically generates overtime for as long as that individual is out. And that's why you see that figure 100,000 over budget. The other thing to talk about, contingency, NSEBC, North Suburban Employee Benefit Cooperative. We partner with 10 other municipalities on our health insurance. We have a fully insured HMO product through Blue Cross Blue Shield. We have a self-insured PPO product. The self-insured PPO has a reserve level that's now below 10%, which can become problematic in terms of the consortium paying its claims and its premiums on a monthly basis. So this is a worst-case scenario. We won't know whether we owe an assessment at the end of the year to help prop up that reserve, but right now, we've actually prepaid a month in advance to help with cash flow at the cooperative. And if we don't need that advance by the end of the year, we won't make a December premium payment to the cooperative, and we won't have this additional expense. But the way things look now, I sit on the board of directors, I, we very well may need that assessment.
And is that driven by experience, the, just the amount of claims?
It's twofold. It's driven by experience, and it's also driven by the fact that the cooperative has worked since the recession to hold premiums as near zero as possible to help municipalities meet their budget obligations, and that's catching up to us now. We've had multiple zeros. We had a negative nine and a half percent rate reduction in the middle of the recession, and so we weren't keeping up with the cost of inflation of medical premiums and medical expenses. So, you know, we've made adjustments to that. We keep, we continue, we adjust our plan every year. So, you know, instead of our rates going up 12% this year, they went up nine and a half percent, and that's done through, you know, changes in our deductibles or copays or how, what prescription drugs are funded. So it's a combination of factors, and we're, we continue to work through that at the cooperative level as well. And then the two items that have the asterisk, street patching, that was approved by the board tonight on the consent agenda. Maybe a better name is a mini resurfacing program, because it's, we're not talking about pothole patching, as we're all aware, we, you know, we have some problems with our streets in town. This is basically identifying a section on a road that is in otherwise good condition, but that one section is in extremely poor condition. So we're going to cut that out and resurface that poor condition of that roadway. So you take out the pavement, you grind and you overlay it, and it looks like a brand-new roadway. And then that extends the overall life of that entire block, because now we don't have to repair the block until all of it is in, you know, closer fair or poor condition. And we're talking, you know, more than five or seven years of life added on to all of these streets. So $200,000 in street patching coming out of reserves is actually a lot for a size of our community in terms of patching. So I think we'll really see a difference come July and August in terms of the improvement to our roadways. And when we do our road condition analysis this summer, we're going to do it after we do the street patching program. So when we meet with municipal services and the finance committee in the fall, we'll have the most up-to-date information on the condition of our roads as we make decisions in 2020 and beyond. And the Wilmot Avenue Phase 1 engineering, there have been some changes at the federal level to the STP grant-funded programs for roads, whether it be Green Bay Road or Locust or Central. And to be eligible and to be near the top for those grant awards, you need to complete your Phase 1 engineering in advance. So that's why we want to do this now, so that we get towards the top of the list sooner than later.
I'm just curious, Mike, with the street patching, how many roads are we, how many streets are we doing our roads? Just like, is that like five? Is it like 20?
We'll have to, we'll have to check with the engineering department. I'm not sure of the specifics.
I have that in my office, I should have.
And is that something we'll communicate to residents, then? We should be communicating that?
It'll be in the communicator, that's coming, there's a list of all the streets that are, that are being worked on
Awesome.
This year, I'm, sorry, I didn't bring it out with me.
No, no, that's awesome.
The only other commodity there you see, of course, is salt because of the winter that we had. The ironic part is, one of the reasons we're also asked the board to approve the additional revenue for, appropriation for street patching is that the public work staff is reporting to Bridget that the fact that we have cut down on the chloride use per incident or per storm, we're trying to reduce the amount of chloride that are being applied for environmental compliance reasons, because it ends up in the storm sewer, it ends up in the river, means more plow passes every time there's a storm, which means they're actually doing more damage to the streets. So the winter was harsh, both in terms of the extreme cold that we had, the many, many storms, and then the fact that each storm, while we used much more salt, we used less salt with every storm, and that meant more plow passes on the streets. So life is a series of juggling blocks. Pull out one, and everything else falls.
Any, any further questions on that? Okay.
So then in this next slide, this is helping us understand where we are at right now, then, given where I told you where revenues are at, where we've talked about with our expenses. What does this mean for our overall reserve? So as you would expect, our reserve numbers are going up. One of the other things that has been mentioned a couple of times tonight is our rating. So we kind of like to look at where our reserves are compared to where a AAA community is supposed to be, per Moody's metrics. So they would have us roughly at at least 10 million, so we're now looking to be 12.7. And that 12.7 assumes all those items that we just talked about on the expenditure page. So it includes spending the additional 200,000 for the road patching and the 45,000 as well. So our reserves are in decent shape, truly. That's one of the things that we are going to be talking about further, about how we are going to utilize these reserves going forward and what is sort of the best way to continue to manage those. That's an item that is going to be coming before the finance committee, so we'll be talking about that, and then eventually, this will be discussed at the full board as well. So we're going to turn to the water and sewer fund. And the reason why we normally talk about those two together is because the revenue sources are linked right now, and they're really linked because sewer revenues are driven by water consumption. And where I have a concern this year is that our consumption numbers are continuing to decline. So just stepping back here and looking at this chart, revenues are down slightly, our expenditures are up, and that's up due to water main repairs that had to happen because of the winter activity that we experienced. So our reserves are actually slightly lower than what we were projecting them to be. So this is going to prompt us to have a kind of further discussion with the 2020 budget. And the reason why I say that is, we have a, what I'll call a median assumption about what is the total amount of consumption that we expect to get, and it really was based on trends, what has happened over the last several years. So what I wanted to do for you in this chart is not blind you with all the colors, but to give you some sense as to what has been the consumption usage over the past several years, to help you understand maybe where we came up with the estimate, because you're going to see, if you look at 2011, 2012, and even kind of 2013's activity, you can see where they were at and why it would have justified the number that we had. Then you start looking at 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, and 19, our consumption numbers are coming down. So if the number, if our consumption continues to decline, then what we're going to need to do is have a different discussion then about our rate, because we still need the revenues to support all the other work that we're doing. So that was the purpose of the slide. The other thing in terms of why I had the oval out here is, in particular, in those years where we had the steep declines, it's, and there's, there's a delay in terms of what's happening here. So as residents, you know that your water bills and your utility bills are quarterly, and it is, that means you're getting about a two-and-a-half-month delay between the bill that you received and the consumption that you had. So that kind of makes sense, why you see the greatest consumption numbers here in those outer months, because it's really reflecting the usage from two-and-a-half months prior to that. So it's also the reason why we don't do the water fund transfer until the very end of the year, because we want to see what our consumption, what our revenue collections have been. So it's really going to be in the latter part of this year that we're going to get a better sense in terms of what's going on. But even 2019 right now, given what has, what we've experienced in the first quarter, is we are below where we were at at 2018, and 2018 was a really low year for us as well. So I have concerns about what we're going to need to do with rates going forward.
Is there any thought why the consumption is declining as it is?
So I can speculate, and I could say, part of it's mother nature. That's one of the things that we normally talk about. So when we have droughts, if we go back to that one slide, in 2012, that is a great example in terms of what happened. So look at these huge peaks that we have. That was all in 2012, and that was a drought year. So mother nature definitely plays a role. When we have very wet springs, or wet falls, or even a wet summer, so think about then the storms that we've had and the issues that we're dealing with there, that's going to affect consumption. But I think the other part is, think of what we've talked about in terms of the housing stock. All the permit activity that's gone on, all the new homes that, and the turnover that's happened there. So if you think about it, people are probably replacing this then with energy-efficient appliances. So they're putting in low-flow showerheads, they're changing out their, their washing machines and the dishwashers. So those are the types of things that are going to, on the one hand, it's great for the environment. It's not always so great for the balance sheet.
I think that was something we actually, in the timeframe a little bit before this chart, we had been reducing our projected per capita consumptions, and most municipalities have, just because everything is, Melinda said, is evolving toward energy star, and every toilet that's replaced, every showerhead that's replaced, every appliance that's replaced is designed to use less water, and personal habits have changed in terms of everything from watering the grass to washing the car and things like that.
So with the sewer fund, it's a short and sweet story. Revenues are down for reasons that we just talked about, and expenditures are actually tracking the budget thus far. So no sort of different story to discuss with the reserves. We had expected that the reserves were going to be coming down. That's, that was planned usage, and it had to go, it was hand-in-hand with our debt service and the fee increase that we did back in 2014 and 2015. So that leaves us then with our slide about the 2020 budget schedule. So as I've alluded to already, in May and June, we're going to be meeting with the finance committee to talk about the budget reserve policy. In June, we're going to have a committee of the whole meeting to talk about the stormwater utility feasibility study. In July, I'll be coming back to you again with then mid-year financial review. In August, we'll be talking more about our road program and the funding. In September, we will look at our full CIP, the 10-year, and look at what our requests are going to be and the needs that people have for the 2020 budget. In October, we will present the proposed budget, as well as having our budget workshops in terms of the meetings as a committee of the whole. In November, we adopt the budget, and then in December, we adopt the tax levy ordinance.
I'm going to refer to this as the fund has just begun slide.
If I could jump in here real quick, too. This is going to be a little bit different than past years because of timing, especially as it relates to the condition, surveying the condition of our roads. And that's why you see the CIP meeting in September. Usually, August or something, it was even in July sometime. So we're pushing that back to give staff more time to collect the data, and the mid-year review usually is later as well. This is a little earlier, just in terms of scheduling all of this. And usually, at the mid-year review, that's when we look to the board for direction on our tax levy or other fees or water rates and whatnot. We may have to push that discussion later in the year as the road program discussion shakes out. So it may just be more of a status update like tonight was with some projections, and we'll give that direction later on before we prepare the budget.
Yeah, because usually, we'll, we'll do that direction, not in a board meeting, but in a committee of the whole.
Correct.
But it will at least be good to keep that, like, just like tonight, sort of thinking about where we're at, so that it helps us understand the decisions that we'll make for 2020 then.
Any questions for Ms. Boye? And obviously, she's available, as are the other staff members, if you have questions subsequent to the meeting. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So back to Trustee Kennedy, that was your only item. So Administration Committee, Trustee Dodd. I was looking over there for you. You know, it's going to take me a while to get used to this.
All items were on consent.
Municipal Services, Trustee Sullivan.
All items approved on consent.
Public Safety Committee, Trustee Kersman.
No report.
Judiciary Committee, Trustee Ponket.
No report.
There are no reports from our special committees. Item 7 is new business. There's no additional new business discussed. Item 8 is adjournment. So Trustee Kennedy, may I have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
And Trustee Barrow, can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? We stand adjourned at 8:59.